Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Smith, Focke-Tschech, and Agricultural High School, Tuesday, May 16th. May I have a call to order first?
Mr. Kaling.
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Quadro.
Present.
Dr. Pearson Campbell.
Present.
And I anticipate Mary to come. Of course.
I have questions.
To clarify, in the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on our own under control, in this law, the literary and justice of law. Mission statement, Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social recons and continued employment in post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Presentation from the public this evening, we have addressed.
Yes, briefly, just wanted to pass along our newly published volume five of The Rising Moonstone. Some of you already have a copy, so I'm just gonna come around and leave you with our thanks and for your support, as always.
Thanks, Cam.
And later, Mandy will tell you about the evening we had at Forbes Library, which was wonderful. They hosted us along with Stroll Dogs, Ryan Eagle, for our launch party, so the kids got to come to the library and do a poetry reading and an art show in the library, second floor. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I love the public vote on the covers.
Participation by trustees.
Yes. Excuse me.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, I didn't see Dr. there.
So, on behalf of Unit D, I noticed that, under your new business, you have a vote to approve and cover the costs for senior banquet for vocational teachers, and I would like to thank you all. I hope it passes. I hope it passes unanimously, just with a blink of an eye, and thank you again for the consideration.
Thank you.
I attended the policy group on trades women's issues meeting last month, which focused on the school-to-trades pipeline. It's exciting to hear about all of the work that's being done to diversify the trades, but discouraging to be reminded how far there is to go. I'll highlight the Association of General Contractors, which recruits fifth graders using a book called Celeste Saves the City and donated Legos for students who are practicing project managers. A G C also provides externships for educators, counselors, and superintendents with a $3,000 to $4,000 stipend in D E C P D points. Participants work with member firms and go to commercial construction sites to see different careers and what field trips for students are like. They also offer micro grants to students to pay for their driver's license, interview clothes, and other job-related expenses. I shared this information with Dr. Lincoln Hooker and Ms. Chartier. I also want to let the board know that Dr. Lincoln Hooker and I met regarding his evaluation. We reached a mutual agreement that it makes more sense for his evaluation cycle to be two years instead of one, which is allowed by regulations since he's an experienced superintendent. Therefore, his formative evaluation will take place at next month's meeting. We'll have a chance to ask Dr. Lincoln Hooker questions, and he can revise his goals if he chooses. His summative evaluation with performance ratings will take place this time next year.
A student question. How long is the superintendent's contract for?
Four years.
Four years. Okay. Since the last Board of Trustees meeting, I attended the M A S C on the Hill in Boston. That was a great experience. We met with Senator Joe Commerford in regards to how to move forward and possibly are trying to figure out a way to fund a new D building or something bigger picture down the road, a large-scale project, and how we can make that a reality, and so we're starting those conversations. Also, Crystal, you've mentioned Wednesday, the requests are coming in and the proposals are coming in tomorrow?
Correct. They had a walkthrough, Tim and Craig had a walkthrough yesterday.
Okay, for potential design firm?
For potential, correct.
Okay.
So they're being posted tomorrow with a bid opening on the 26th.
All right, so 5:26.
Correct.
All right, so what we're just talking about is the proposals of being posted to the central register and advertised publicly for design firm services for the horticultural building. There seems to be good activity or interest in it, and we're getting pretty excited, but there's still a shortfall of approximately, our best guess is $1.5 million, so we need to figure that out. And that's all I got for today.
Thank you. I'd like to enter into the record that there was an open letter that was addressed to the trustees this morning by Mr. Michael Quinlan. He was the member of City Council. And it was, the subject was the Smith Ball Baseball, and he could not be here tonight, but he sent an open letter to us in regards to the field conditions up at our Cannon Field where they play the games. And his concern was that somebody could get hurt in regards to the field not being mowed correctly and being maintained correctly. I was very concerned about this when I read it, and I did go up to the field at 6 o'clock this morning to view it and found it in fairly good shape in regards to a bean mowed and playable condition, so I was a little surprised. And so I went and spoke with the superintendent in regards to who's actually responsible for taking care of that, found out it's a DPW of the city of Northampton that's supposed to maintain those grounds. So during the day, I reached out to Rick, and he had a copy of the letter, and Julie had a copy of the letter, and Julie happened to reply and said, asked Mr. Quinlan that she had seen the field being maintained today and that they were on the grounds doing things. So later on, I received a reply from Mr. Quinlan through an email stating that the field had been taken care of. He said that, "Thank you for your response, Julie, Lexi, and trustees, I was out running errands when I saw your text, so I stopped up at Arcanum and saw the work done by our DPW. They were just finishing trimming, I heard, to get spots for the weed rack, and they also did the little league field as well. And it just may have been a timing issue as far as having that done, but I'm very concerned. I mean, our team is doing fabulous. They're undefeated, and they're playing another game right now at that field. And we couldn't be prouder, as far as the trustees, of what's being accomplished by the sports teams, and we want to give them our full support." So I just wanted to center it into the record that I want to thank Ms. Quinlan for making us aware of the situation and also that we can monitor it from this point forward. But that's all I have as far as other trustees' piece. Thanks, Deb. So we go into, may I have a motion, the second, to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2023, and May 2nd, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Rick, do you say?
So.
I didn't, oh, I didn't hear. That's not my problem. Okay, thank you. So is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So at this point, we are going to.
Yes, and this month, we are welcoming our criminal justice program, all instructors, along with a recent grad, just to give us a highlight of all the wonderful things that they do in that particular program for our students in our school.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Kristin Marsiniak. For those that don't know me, this is my favorite coworker, Joseph Brewer, and our graduate, Jordan Dunham, who graduated last year. Right? So we put together a brief slideshow, with really brief, I promise, some of it we actually share with our pre-exploratory students, but we're going to do some important information that we wanted to share about. So this is our freshman class. We have an extremely diverse program, non-traditional, somewhere between 65% and 70% female. We're excited about that fact, if it continues to remain that way. I think it's been that way consistently. So what does a typical day look like? There isn't a typical day. I think that draws a lot of kids in. Every day is going to start with some kind of physical training, PT, so they're up there moving, and they're able to sit for a period of time. Some of our topics are here that we cover, law, trial court system, investigations, forensics. We also add extra to this, knowing what kind of jobs the kids are going to have, what's available to them when they graduate, so we've incorporated the dispatching, some military prep, things like that, to try and get those entry-level positions, which are really interesting. I'm not going to read these off, but a list of certifications, so we're up to 19 currently. We really packed the curriculum, a lot of FEMA certifications, a lot of things that Joe and I had to do. We were both police officers in the field, so a lot of these we had to complete, and our students will have to complete, depending on when they continue in the field, depending on what program or track that they take. But we also offer things like stenography, which not every student wants to be in the spotlight, wants to get up and do a presentation. They may want to disappear in the back of the room and still make a good wage, have their own business, things like that, and also tie it into the agricultural campus that we're on. So Joe started teaching some of the animals disaster prep, livestock disasters, things like that, a little more interested in kids.
Well, how many certifications does each student get? They don't get all of these?
All of these.
They get all nine?
Every student graduates as a senior.
Wow.
Yep. Some of them, their programs that we teach, others, there's, like, some of this FEMA is online, so it's all self-guided at their own pace, though they wear a headset, they walk through it, there's scenarios and things like that, and then we'll do different things in shop to just kind of drive that information home, because it gets a little monotonous. Yeah, they're leaving with all 19 certifications. Physical training, which you heard of, PT, so that's going to vary. It's a lot of gym class-style activities. We will, at times, have some of the military recruiters come in, they'll do different programs. A favorite up on the right is Just Dance, so we'll play some videos, a little bit non-traditional. And then the step aerobics up to the left. Defensive tactics also. So we have academy instructors come in to teach this, so that it's current, handcuffing, baton. They'll also have to use these skills at Skills USA. Some field trips. So Joe, do you want to talk about?
Sure. So, in the last several years, we've made some really good partnerships with a lot of the public safety agencies around us. We formed a really close partnership with the Massachusetts State Police and their community action team, Trooper Deshaun Brown, who has kind of opened up a whole new world to our program, it's an actual career path that are available. This year, we also had the opportunity to partner with the Massachusetts Fire Academy, offering a one-day exploratory into fire service careers. We were the first high school in western Massachusetts to attend the program. Great feedback from the instructors and the program evaluator. So again, we kind of increasing what we can do for exposure, showing them jobs that they can get right out of high school and then further on down. We also started last year a program where we take our seniors on a senior class trip. Last year, we went to New York City, saw the Statue of Liberty, explored the World Trade Center Memorial Museum. We actually, yesterday, had our trip this year. We went out to the Massachusetts State Police Marine Unit in Boston, where the students learned about marine safety patrol operations and hazard mitigations to prevent disasters in the ocean. And we also ended up at the U.S. Coast Guard Station, also in Boston, where we were able to expose the students to careers available in the United States Coast Guard. It's been the one branch of the service we really haven't had much luck with, getting here on campus and having exposure to the students, so we're very grateful to have that partnership built with the Coast Guard, and we may have a senior this year that might be signing up with the Coast Guard after his visit yesterday.
This is me too.
This is me too?
Yeah.
So this is example, this is the, thank you, this is the Fire Academy trip at this one. Again, we partner with the Mass Fire Academy, they're very interested. Most public safety agencies today are having a very hard time in recruiting with its police, fire, or EMS dispatch, so they really want to get a hold on high school students to expose them to these jobs and try and regain that interest. There is a push in public safety to lower the age, at least in the fire services, and corrections to start now, generally down to 19 years of age to be able to get on full-time. So again, the students had a full day of fire operations. They were actually also one of the first groups in Massachusetts to see a backdraft simulator, where it actually shows the effects of high oxygen deficiency in a room, gets the fire down low, and then what happens when oxygen is reintroduced. So it was a great opportunity for us to introduce physics into our vocational curriculum, so we do, we try to partner in to get as much academic strands into our vocation as well. So we were very lucky that this year we were able to get that piece in there and bring in physics into our shop classroom setting. Stay here, next man.
Do you know what the reasoning is for keeping the age requirement higher, especially if a four-year college degree is required for?
So what they, several years ago, in public safety, they decided they wanted people to be a little bit more mature, and policing, it was because the firearms requirements changed to be 21 years of age, so in order to carry a firearm in Massachusetts, a pistol, at least you have to be 21 years of age. So they jumped that age up for purposes of staying legal, so to speak. And we found that our partners in firefighting and corrections raised that age as well. Now, again, with the struggle to recruit, they want to start that conversation of lowering the age, maybe get them in a little bit earlier. I know we had some conversation with the Hampshire County Sheriff, and I know that's something that they're advocating for, is getting people hired at 19. So with the certifications that we offer here, when a student walks out of here, if that change happens, they would have all the basic requirements to get an entry-level job. So we're kind of piggybacking that they can absolutely get a job when they graduate to putting them in the best position at 19 years old, if that change happens, to get a job in public safety.
What do our students do in the interim, our graduates?
Sure, I'm not gonna, I don't want to steal Jordan's thunder, but there are a few job opportunities that, right out of high school, they'll have the opportunity to get, and I know Jordan's going to touch on at least one of them. But the security industry, you can be 18 years of age. We had a recent graduate that finished her EMT certification, is now working for AMR in Springfield. A few that have joined the military, active duty in Reserve or National Guard. So we've got students that are navigating their way through the different professions, and I said, I won't steal Jordan's thunder on the other job opportunities, they can have immediately post-graduation.
Thank you.
Most departments are still looking for that two-year college, minimum college, two years, so I think you're going to see that across the state at some point, mandatory.
Is that tied to the certification?
Life experience, bigger picture, not just being in a bubble, growing up in that town, staying in that town, working in that town. So the hope is that they, you know, being on a college campus, they have different experiences, and a lot of that will help them be better at whatever it is they're doing, in the education area.
The horses. So again, being an agricultural high school, we also connect with some of the professions in policing and public service that involve animals. So UMass Mounted Patrol works with the kids on how horses are used in crowd control. We have several K-9 units that come in during the course of the year to work with the students and introduce them to service animals. There is work behind the scenes right now to actually get one of our seniors for next year's class to do an internship with UMass Police Mounted Unit. So again, these community exposures we're having with the program, and the word that's getting around about the kids in our program specifically, is encouraging more places to say, "We would like one of your students to come here and spend time with us." Most agencies, for those of you that with police reform might not be aware, there are no longer reserve officers, so part-time officers, there's no part-time police academy anymore. So a lot of agencies, especially in western Massachusetts, what they would do is hire somebody part-time, spend some time working with them for a few years, and decide if this is a person they want to hire full-time. We're now seeing agencies using our students to start that period of time where they're evaluating people, and we've had students offer full-time jobs in that interim between 18 and 21 already, where they're doing other public service, public safety jobs with that agency, and the goal of hiring them full-time as law enforcement at 21.
Well, top right, we're still at the stadium, so we went out and spent the day with the Director of Security there, had a great time, actually got to tour the facility, they could see all of their behind-the-scenes, their camera systems, and how they kind of handle things. It was a great experience for the kids. Want to talk about the mock trial?
Sure. So every year, our sophomores do a legal courtroom procedure class. We left out last year, with our connection with the District Attorney's Office here in Hampshire County, they opened up the old courthouse in Gothic Street and allowed us to conduct our mock trial in the actual courtroom. We were able this year to participate again in Law Day, where we had speakers discussing civic-mindedness as well as voting and voting rights. So the students are going to have two opportunities to go to the courthouse, one was just two weeks ago, where they learned about, again, civic engagement and voting rights, and then this week, actually on Thursday, will be down at Northampton District Court, and they'll present their criminal trial.
So the sophomores are presenting the trial, and then the seniors act as jurors. Guest speakers, we utilize a lot of guest speakers. This initiative, this was with the Army National Guard, so they came out, they talked about the effects of alcohol and narcotics, so use and abuse. UMass doing some CPR, defibrillator training. A lot of guest instructors, we had some robotics team-building activities, where they could have to build these robotic trucks, I guess, I haven't taught them, and then they had to run them through an obstacle course, so he could be the quickest. And this is a fan favorite, in the middle, where they actually were given several MREs, so the military food that our military personnel get, they were given a variety of three different meal packs, and they had to create different foods depending on what they had, so they had to create a menu. Some of them got pretty creative, and then we had staff volunteers that came in and actually consumed the food, or tried to, depending on the situation. A great opportunity for the kids, they actually get to come in, they had the, you know, they had the whole presentation piece, and they had to do the speaking part, and come in and talk about what they made, and a lot of team building there as well. Some more guest speakers. We had Vic Caputo in, Captain Caputo here on the right. Recent, this was an awesome training, he came in and met with the seniors. He did the Alec Training, which is autistic training for law enforcement and anyone in the field, first responders. So how you might approach these individuals, how you handle somebody that's in crisis that may be autistic, how to recognize different things. I think most importantly, the kids, you know, took away, you know, some signs and symptoms, what to look for, and then basically how to not escalate those situations if they were ever encountered. Some recent events, this was our mock crash that was on campus, so this was really well-done by our department, police department, we had livestock helicopter come in also, so an event pre-prom, to try and stress the importance of making good decisions, not using drugs or alcohol, and how, you know, a quick decision could alter your life forever. This is Morgan, Morgan's one of our seniors. Morgan was just sworn in.
Sworn in.
Sworn in, thank you. Morgan was just sworn in up at the Montague Fire Department. Morgan really didn't know what he wanted to do, he was thinking military at one point, and then we gently guided him towards an internship at the Northampton Fire Department. Kid fell in love with it, I couldn't talk enough about him, but he's just taken to it, and it's just going to run wild. He's already signed up for his EMT, he was already given a grant funded, so he's already got some financial aid. We'll see if he's doing good things. Jacob Shaddick, so we have a 100-hour community service requirement of our kids. Jacob actually did some of his up at the Sunderland Fire Department, they were super proud of him. So we're always looking for new and other avenues for the kids, any kind of community-based programs, businesses, other ways for them to give back, so if anybody ever has, you know, phone calls or a need for anything, we always have students that are looking for actual work unpaid. Want to talk about Lily?
Sure. This is Lily Hathaway, she is one of our sophomores currently. Lily was nominated to attend the FBI National Academies Program for sophomores in high school. She was chosen as one of 15 students in the entire Northeast to attend this academy. She will be going in July and graduates on July 18th. It's a three-and-a-half-day intensive program where they learn things about de-escalation trends in public safety and public service. So this is a first time for our school, having somebody attend. She had to go through an interview process, she had to go out and find a police official who was a member of the FBI National Academy when he graduated, so she did some research and found somebody to sponsor her. She was then interviewed by seven public safety professionals from around New England, and again, she was one of 15 selected from over 100 applicants. So again, super proud of the kids in our program, they're always really shining a positive light on themselves in this school.
And this was a shot from yesterday, when we went out to Boston with the Mass State Police Marine Patrol Unit. So this was on their 42-foot vessel, 42 feet. The kids actually got to get up front, they had the whole, they gave them a whole tours, they got to get up, some of them actually got to drive the boat, so they're still talking about that. And a lot of them now want to sign up and be state troopers patrolling Boston Harbor. A great opportunity. The gentlemen that were there, the troopers couldn't have done a better job just talking about their backgrounds. One of them was actually from Southampton, so they had that tie. A lot of times, when we go out to Boston, they don't know anything west of Worcester, so it was nice to actually get out there and get some recognition. They were really interested in the kids, and really appreciative of having them there. Our current co-op and internships, Northampton, PD&amp;Fire, Belcher Town, Williams Town, East Hampton, Deerfield. We're still a fairly young program, it was only in 2013 it was established, so we're hitting our 10-year mark this year. So for our kids to get out in co-op, we actually have a lot of kids out on dispatch jobs, are actually filling shifts. We have kids that are riding around the fire department, going to different medical calls. Police departments are finally seeing the value in it, so they're actually giving the kids a boost from Best. So East Hampton, they're actually giving them a vest, he gets to go out and do ride-alongs and go on different calls. He actually helped them to process evidence at a murder scene, so it was a really good opportunity. Skills USA, Ms. Jordan Dunham. Ah, so Skills USA, we're super proud, we can't even talk enough about this, the program, our kids, we've had a great group of kids that have gone, we've won numerous state awards, have gone to nationals several times, and last year, our very own Jordan Dunham went down, she actually placed first, she won first place in the nation. How many schools do you think were there?
You had 50, 60 competitors, I'd say, in your group?
Yeah, it's a big group.
Pictures.
Actually, just, go back one more second, just, I want to.
Sure.
So one of the highlights, showing some of these pictures, I just, when I met Jordan, it was in her sophomore year, Jordan was very shy and very quiet in certain, especially in public settings. What is really, I find profound with our program is, here's a young lady who, two years later, standing on a national stage, big smile on her face, the way she interacted with people, adults, professionals in the industry. It's amazing to see, and again, she's going to talk about what she does now, and the feedback that I get, and I know Ms. Marsiniak gets, from our graduates is that these kids are amazing, people that are doing amazing things in the industry already. So this is the program, this is what matters to us, and this is what we're seeing, is that positive feedback from the work we're putting in, coming in, years after some of them are gone.
Even if they don't do anything with criminal justice, they're just going to be phenomenal people. They're going to go out, they're going to be contributing members of society and just give back in some way. Some of our graduates, this is our last slide. So Haven Du Planko graduated, she went down, went into basic for the Air Force, and then she was actually recruited to be on their honor guard, which was a huge deal. She served a bunch of times. She served a bunch of times, she had some great experiences. She's still active. Jordan, is that, I'm not sure if I'm telling you. Tanya went to Westcom, so also dispatching. Amir, obviously military. This is Jess, she's in the AMR. Tyler just signed up. Tyler shipped off Army, correct? Army. So a lot of different career fields, even the ones that are not continued, like I said, in the field, they're still doing great things, they're still raising humans. This is what, this is what it's all about for us, really, the kids. So any questions on this piece?
Got a comment, actually, and a question, but it's so wonderful that you expose your students to so many different potential, you know, so many different aspects of the field in which they could work, you know. We, so many people don't have the chance, a lot of us don't have the chance to get out and see things like that, to know, most of us don't, you know, to know what's out there in our field, kind of what we've been doing. See the diversity of opportunities here, to expose them to that is just phenomenal. I was thinking what you said, which was meeting all of the people that they do, when you take them out and also invite people in, it just builds their skills, their confidence, their ability to interact with adults, with, you know, all kinds of folks.
Yeah, not like you're the head of anyone that's entering the field.
Fantastic. I did, I have a question. You may not be able to answer it now, which is totally fine, but policing has changed a lot, and it's especially in terms of how it is viewed in two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm wondering, I'm sure that, you know, I'm wondering how it impacts this shot and how it impacts your instruction and the curriculum.
So I think initially, when things started to change, Joe and I were nervous, like, what does that mean for our program? We had different conversations, there was some stress, heard from some parents, but what it's, it's been the complete opposite. So it's actually encouraged more people to step up, and the right people to step up, and I need to get involved. I think it's been a positive. I guess, I think that, obviously, people need to be held accountable, so I think that's taking place. I think there needs to be more awareness to different things, why the police do what they do, and a lot of hard conversations that I think are taking place, and the right people are having those conversations. And there is a shift, there needs to be a shift. Like, Joe, the reason we're here is because we knew there needed to be a shift, and we can make more difference here, educating the kids are going to go out and be those leaders tomorrow. So that's our resume there in a nutshell.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we, when I came in, Kristin and I did a lot of talking, you know, we didn't shy away from the tough subjects. We teach implicit bias. We do a full course on that. And we give, and we open it up to conversations on videos that we watch and the training that we do. And what I think we both have found is that we have good, genuine conversations with our kids. They don't all agree. And I think we probably all agree, in today's society, we've found that it's very hard for people to learn to disagree peacefully, or to come to that conclusion of, we may not agree, but there's no reason for us to not get along. And the conversations we're having with these kids, they can agree to disagree. They realize they come from different perspectives. We're teaching them to have these conversations and to have, hold them in a professional way. So again, to reiterate, we really haven't seen any negatives. In fact, the number of kids that are interested in our program have risen in the last several years.
Sounds like it's another way that you're preparing your students for the world after graduation.
Yeah, we're excited about it. Perform away.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to turn it over to Jordan. Jordan's a graduate, she graduated last year. She's going to tell you a little bit about her experiences and where she is now.
So after I graduated, I went to Atlanta with Mr. Brewer. It was one of the best trips I've ever been on. I was, I mean, it was amazing because I met so many different people from so many different backgrounds, and although we competed, we got to talk to so many different schools, and it was like so diverse in what they were learning versus what we were learning, and we were able to really share things about our shop. So after Skills, I went to Western New England and Criminal Justice, and my focus is on victims. So they have a few concentrations, and one of them that I picked was victims, and then the other one is investigations. Through the program at Criminal Justice here, I learned so much that in my Criminal Justice classes in college, what I thought was going to be difficult and a challenge has actually come really easily to me. I know the material that they're teaching, I'm familiar with it. I was just telling them, I barely have to open my textbooks because I sit in a lecture, and I'm already familiar with what the professor's talking about. When we're learning, I have a class on, you know, the judicial system, but I learned it here first. So it's like a refresher, and it makes the classes in college much less stressful and familiar with the material. So it's been a really nice transition into college. It hasn't been stressful at all. I feel way ahead of the curriculum because I understand what they're talking about. And I think the other thing that has helped me is the co-op opportunity. I'm with Wolverham Regional, so we cover the town of Wolverham and the town of Hamden. So I dispatch fire, police, and EMS. I'm fully trained, so I'm taking nine-in-one calls. I'm working with the community, and that has really helped to open my eyes. I think I went in senior year, and it's given me the opportunity to work in the field. And working in the field, I was able to make the decision, do I want to invest in an education in this? Is this something I want to further my education in? And it was really wonderful to be able to make that determination before I got to school. And I love the environment at the police department. I love being there. It opened my eyes to so much, and it also helped me at Skills a lot, because I was comfortable with the scenarios, and I knew what I would do in the real world. And so it was a lot less stressful, actually, in these scenarios, because I'm dealing with real world things too. So the transition to college has been very, very smooth for me, especially with the Criminal Justice curriculum that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll check her out.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I can follow that presentation.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody.
Gold medal winner, National Skills.
Set me up a failure. Okay, small fun, I apologize for that. So just some brief updates over the past month, month and a half. And as Mr. Aquajo said, we're sort of neck deep in construction projects, in meeting with architects and OPMs and so on and so forth. So back in April, on April twelfth, we had a meeting with the architect that we fired to begin planning our companion animal building. Again, that's the former pig barn that has been taken down, and we are designing a new facility that will be within that same footprint, that will house the program, that will kettle and groom dogs. The long-term vision will be a benefit for our staff, be something we're taking schedule where our staff can bring the dogs in for the day, our students can then work with them, groom them, kennel them. So it's our continued vision of expanding all of the concentration within animal science. The following day, I just want to thank the horticulture program, specifically Mr. Devon and Mr. Omsbach. They hosted an arboriculture CDE up at Lake Park. It was a fascinating program, various horticulture programs. Northern Tree was there as a major sponsor. They had their boom trucks, and the students were taking rides up in a bucket. Can't tell you how high, way too high. And I seen the kids climbing trees and whatnot. It's just truly fascinating to see that real world experience. The following week was a much deserved implication for the staff and the students. They came back from that break, and on April twenty-fourth, the mob officers, we had the opportunity to meet the Education Secretary, Tutwiler, Donna Asadet. And I can't speak highly enough of the secretary. I've only had a few opportunities to interact with them. Those few opportunities have been very eye-opening, very reassuring. That particular meeting on the twenty-fourth, obviously, the audience was very targeted. The audience was vocational-led superintendents, so that's all we talked about. His experience as a former superintendent in Lynn, Lynn has their own vocational school, so he is well aware of chapter seventy-four. The big takeaway I had was a couple comments he made about his experience in Lynn. He would tell his building administrators, specifically at the middle schools, that they are to allow any school option to come in and talk to the students, whether that was the vocational school in Lynn, whether that was the charter schools, private school or whatever. And he felt it was a family's opportunity to make a sound, wise decision that was in the best interest of the child and that family. He would not preclude any school option from coming in and talking to the students. So obviously, that was a breath of fresh air. As mob officers, we do struggle many times in many middle schools to have the access to middle school students, to provide them the information so they can make that important decision. So that was nice to hear. I'll talk more about Secretary Tutwiler, a couple extra lines here. Speaking of, the very next line, April twenty-five, twenty-eight, that Friday of that same week, was Massachusetts Skills USA, so we just heard of Jordan, who won the national level last year. Massachusetts Skills USA, this is at the state level. These are individuals who scored high enough, I think, first and second within the district competition. They go, they went on to twenty-eight for the hands-on competition. And Secretary Tutwiler was there, he participated in the ribbon cutting ceremony, and he spoke again, obviously, a slightly larger audience, that included the students, but again, very pro what we're doing with the vocational lead. On the twenty-ninth, the following week, not the following day, I'm sorry, that Saturday, failed to recognize Mr. Brewer when he was here, but both Mr. Brewer and Ms. Marsiniak from Criminal Justice, they were nominated and selected as the Western Mass awardees this year for the Our Community Salute Ceremony, and it was the General Colin Powell Community Service Award. So basically, what the Colin Powell Community Service Award recognizes guidance counselors by trade, not great that those two are not guidance counselors, but in theory, is guidance counselors in the state that go above and beyond in serving their students and providing them opportunities, options post-high school, specifically working with the military. Those two were, and you heard it tonight, how many recruiters they work with, whether it's the National Guard, the Air Force, and so forth, working with our students, giving them information without pushing them necessarily into a particular branch, and not providing those opportunities for the students and the families to make those decisions. That particular ceremony was down in Jalap. Unfortunately, Ms. Marsiniak was not able to make it that day, so I was Ms. Marsiniak in the afternoon, and I was blown away. It was the first military program I've been involved in in over twenty years, and it was, it was nice going back to that environment. You sort of miss that, that connection. And they had a lot of guest speakers, there was a guest speaker from each of the branches, very motivational, very inspiring. It was great to see. The following week, we were invited down to the Child Advocacy Center down back. That was the former farmhouse here on campus, meeting with the executive director and a board member, and they have sort of this vision of a backyard garden for the families and the students, the children that will be down there being interviewed, and how can we sort of work together? So there were some requests that they made, we're already working on those. So I think that's going to be a continued great partnership between the school and the advocacy center. The next day, we got our continued equity work with Cindy Weeks Bradley. I just want to, again, highlight Criminal Justice, and they're talking about the implicit bias training that they're going with the students. That's exactly what the administrative team is going through over the past. So the fact that as the leaders of the school are going through the same training that the high school students are going through reinforces how important it is and how impactful it is within a high school classroom. I've learned a lot. We had a session today, honestly, and I had a lot of, I had an opportunity to speak my mind, share my feelings, my biases that I need to be better cognizant of, and getting a lot of positive feedback from Cindy, so I can't speak for the rest of the team, but it's been a wonderful opportunity to hear a different perspective, be reflective, and I think improve as a leader, so I can't thank Cindy enough. The following day, as the board knows, I was invited over to East Hampton, the Chamber of Commerce, for this Economic Development Summit. I just want to give you the Cliff Notes version of what that particular summit was about. So Mayor LaChappelle, part of her campaign when she was elected was sort of how to reinvigorate the local economy in East Hampton. If you're familiar with East Hampton, I think there's a large segment of the city that wants to be like North Hampton, to be perfectly honest, and there's also a segment of the population that wants to remain very rural, and it's sort of this debate back and forth. That particular city was built on the former mills. The mills have now left the city, they have a lot of abandoned mill space. And what does the city do? So the mayor is envisioning these mills sort of being reinvented into potential workspaces for prospective entrepreneurs. So the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce has sort of taken its vision on as a personal project of theirs, and they've invited various stakeholders to this particular summit. I was the stakeholder representing education, but there were also representatives from a lot of state agencies, local chambers of commerce, and so on and so forth. And just sort of brainstorming, what would this look like in East Hampton? Sort of what their brainchild right now is to become a hub for entrepreneurs that have, or potential entrepreneurs, who have a concept, have an idea, but don't know how to start a business, that perhaps they could be drawn to East Hampton, and there could be resources within the city to support that potential entrepreneur, to go from idea and concept to an actual business. And I think they tie it back to Smith Vocational would be, we potentially have the workforce to then support those businesses. And one step ahead, we may have students who have ideas, and I know some of the activists about this a lot in a lot of the shops, that not only are we training them for entry-level positions, but they're also potentially getting ideas on how to own their own business. So potentially, our students could then tap into the resource over in East Hampton and become future business leaders. So that was our first meeting. I know there's a meeting being planned right now around June. I've offered our space, I opened up our doors to perhaps host a meeting here, again, showcase what we offer here, maybe another connection, so I'll keep the board updated on that. So a great first day. And as Mr. Aquajo said, the following day, that was a busy week. That was Thursday, the MAAC Day in the Hill, and again, I will fully support what Mr. Aquajo said. I think it's a wonderful day. It allows the school committees to come together, learn about a lot of the state initiatives, some main focus points for the, for the school committees across the state. I have to then send kudos to the vocational schools, it's probably one of the best lunches that you'll experience. A lot of the vocational schools go down there, they prepare food, Smith Vocational is one of them, and so all the legislators, senators, and school committee members, they enjoy a nice lunch. And then the afternoon is dedicated to individual meetings with your representatives and senators. So a wonderful day.
What was that for the lunch?
Yes. There we go. That same afternoon, I unfortunately had to excuse myself. We had a MOBA meeting that afternoon with Bobby Baker, the executive office of Education, just talking about some new initiatives around the CTI program, that's the Career Technical Institute Initiative Program, i.e. sort of the Adult Dad Program that Governor Baker spearheaded. There's a lot of money being funneled into that particular initiative. Then this past Monday, again, back to Secretary Tutwiler, I just want to thank Senator Commerford, I want to thank CES for sort of spearheading this opportunity to get the secretary out to Western Mass, specifically to North Hampton, and sort of had this presentation panel discussion down at Union Station.
Union Station.
Okay? Forget the name, depends on the day, I think. It was a wonderful environment, I think, a wonderful setting. I want to applaud four fellow colleagues or four superintendents that had different presentations about topics that are really pertinent to small Western Mass rural communities, which might be different than the secretaries are accustomed to in Eastern Mass. So talking about chapter seventy funding, talking about rural aid, talking about staffing issues, so it was great. And again, I just want to highlight an observation of the secretary. He was sort of sitting table over, so I was able to kind of spy on him a little bit, and he was literally taking pages upon pages upon pages of notes, so he was definitely listening. Didn't look like he was doodling, he was actually physically taking notes. And then he got up afterwards, and he sort of commented on his observations, and just another point to reinforce what I heard when we were with MOBA with him. He made some analogies around family, okay, and working together as a family, and education is one larger family, and sometimes as families, we have to have difficult conversations. And while in education, we have a lot of headwinds, we'd heard a lot of those headwinds that morning, whether it's chapter seventy, rural aid issues, staffing issues, so, so forth. There's a lot of issues and headwinds facing education in general. But within the family, we have a lot of issues, and he kind of called us all out that we have to somehow find a way to respect. have to somehow find a way to respectfully and civilly talk to one another and work with one another, whether that's the traditional comprehensive districts and vocational schools. He said that. Traditional districts and charter schools, private schools, school choice, so on and so forth. So the fact that he acknowledges that there's issues down there, and the fact that he wants to somehow start the conversation so we can begin to solve some problems, again, was sort of refreshing. He is a former superintendent who has walked the block. I think he's somebody that we can respect. So that was that day. That afternoon, we came back. As you heard, we had the mock accident, which I posted on my Facebook page saying, it gets me every time I've seen a mock accident. And, you know, when you hear the sirens for the first time, and you begin to think about what that could truly be, I want to thank Mr. Bianca again. I think he really made a point to the students before they started, that oftentimes, it may be difficult for the student sitting there on the lawn watching this to really have it sink in, but as an adult, it sinks in very quickly. And how can we get that into the students' brains in that moment, sometimes it's difficult? But I think if there's anything that will sink in for the students, is for them to observe that mock accident, and then to see how the light flight helicopter, you can hear it coming over our horizon and landing, it really sent it over the top. So I want to think I really evolved from that. Next day, we had NEAC Steering Committee training for several hours. Again, just making sure that the steering committee is up to speed on the schedule around the NEAC visit, some of the main topics that we have to keep an eye on. So again, under the leadership of Joe and the team, we're definitely moving in the right direction. If anything, we're ahead of our schedule. On the night, that same day, we had first meeting with the OPM. That's Craig Wilber from Schoolhouse Builders. And the OPM again is the owner's project manager, and sort of walked through several main big topics as we begin to prepare for the next phase of the building project for horticulture. We're sort of talking about logistic management, talking about communication, talked about monthly reports that he will prepare for the boards, that he will be apprised on a monthly basis of what's happening during the construction, the whole phase. Also talking about the building committee, what the building committee looks like, when it will be. So it was a great kickoff. I really do respect Craig as a professional. He's very competent. He is very direct, and as a former Marine, he's a former Marine, he can be a bulldog. He is straight to the point, and that's the definite reading in that particular role, to make sure that that job goes as smoothly as possible. That same afternoon, we had an impromptu emergency Mava Board of Directors meeting in regards to the lottery. And just to let the board know, we talked about potential lottery around admissions over the past year or so. This has come to sort of a front burner issue in that there's been many legislative bills that have been submitted. Mava has submitted several. There are bills that have been submitted that would introduce a lottery. But what has happened this past week, as you probably know, the Senate released their proposed budget. As of last Friday, state senators weren't able to submit any amendments to their particular budget, and there wasn't an amendment submitted by Senator Cronin. I think I say this in a future slide. He's out of Pittsburgh. He is sort of the flag bearer of the lottery. He submitted an amendment that will impose a lottery to all vocational schools, in fact, if the budget is approved, and if that amendment is approved, it will go into effect. I'm not here to argue pro or anti lottery, but I am here to stay the process that that amendment is following. I would not say that's such a big topic. There needs to be some great discussion, deep discussion. I think there needs to be debate on both sides, and having an amendment attached to the budget circumvents all of that. There would be no debate. There would be no public hearing. There simply would be a lottery. So if you have any connections to senators, I just recommend that whether they support or against a lottery, at least allow the process to go through how the process should be, and go through the legislative bill process rather than the budget process. So that's my political stand for the evening. Last week was Staff Appreciation Week, and Mr. Aquarjo being there to sort of read the staff. I want to thank the PTO, putting on a great breakfast. That happened last week. Last week, we also had our NHS induction ceremony, another highlight of the evening. So Ms. Dumas, the NHS advisor, did a great job organizing, overseeing, and emceeing the particular ceremony. And what was touching for me, the biggest takeaway, and I've never seen this before except here at Smith, is there's a component around a pinning ceremony aspect, where family members, whether they're parents, or loved ones, or grandparents, or whoever they are, okay, loved ones of the inductees, actually go up and pin the NHS pin to that student. And if you really think about who our students are, and I've shared some of that student demographic data with the board, you know that a lot of our students are high needs. You know our low-income population. You know our population with IEPs. You know the population. To see them and to hear the student speakers last, we talk about their struggles in learning, and then they're up there speaking to a cafeteria full of individuals being inducted into the National Association Society, and that happened because of this particular school and our teachers. And then you see those loved ones who probably struggled as parents, you know, okay, having dinner tables, fights you have to be children to do your homework every night. So you can only imagine how difficult the job those particular families had in raising our students here, and then are able to celebrate by pinning their child or grandchild or whoever they are. It gets emotional. So that's a great thing. On the 11th, this was last Thursday, this was Cindy Weeks Bradley and her team came out for a site visit around the equity audit, and we broke it out to three of the teams. I sort of spearheaded a facilities overview team. Joe and Rebecca had two different teams looking at the teaching and learning, sort of the instructional aspect, going through some academic areas and vocational areas, and then we had a chance to debrief and talk about the takeaways, and then had a wonderful lunch. Again, another great opportunity. My biggest takeaway is just having somebody from the outside coming in, observing and giving you feedback. In a world that you live in every day, oftentimes, you fail to see things because you just live in it. You don't see something or don't notice something. So to hear it from them was great. So another great step.
Did you say that she would be working with the board of trustees at some point?
We are still trying to plan how next year is going to look. My big takeaway is around policy, we're talking about policy, and I think we're going to have something around what should policy look like? Will she stand in front of the board? That's up to discussion. I'll let you know. And then, as I said this morning, was the latest session with Cindy. I thought it was a great dialogue, great discussion. Upper left is the Secretary Tutwiler, the tall man in the middle, and the Mava officers. And then some of you, Anthony Abdelhad from Fentry Associates, he is our lobbyist. He basically lives at the State House, helping us out with a lot of the legislative initiatives that we have. But then the rest of the individuals you see there are Mava representatives. The upper right, this was, again, the Our Community Salute down at Joliet a couple weeks ago. You can see Mr. Brewer, and we see the image of Ms. Marsiniak. You can see all of the keynote speakers representing the different branches, and then these two ladies were the Eastern Mass representatives for receiving the Colin Powell Community Service Award. They were two guidance counselors out of a particular school in Eastern Mass. So a great, great ceremony. And then this was again Secretary Tutwiler last Monday down at Union Station, giving some feedback to the audience. I think a great program. Just a quick preview for the board. I'm sure you already have this in the calendars. This time of year, people say that we're winding down, and we push back to say we're winding up after April vacation. So we have our senior banquet on Tuesday, May 30th. Monday is Memorial Day, if that gives you sort of context. So Tuesday is the senior banquet at Le Park. All of these are six o'clock in the evening. Try to keep it consistent so you don't forget what time it is. Wednesday, the 31st, is the senior awards night in the cafeteria here at school. Thursday, June 1st, is graduation out on the football field. And last day of school is not at six o'clock. I'm just looking it up. The last day of school is June 21st. So it's a unique week this year. This is the first time that we're in session and celebrating and honoring Juneteenth, which happens to be Monday, the 19th. We come back on Tuesday, the 20th, and Wednesday, the 21st, and those two school days are half days for the students. So just ahead to look at that. So I sort of already mentioned the admissions lottery. I just want the board to be cognizant of what's happening at the state level. Again, Senator Cronin of Pittsburgh has admitted that amendment, it wouldn't mandate admissions lotteries statewide effective this year. We're working with Fentry Associates, working with the senators. And the 17th, which happens to be tomorrow, I believe, we have a meeting with the Senate President to talk about this. I will not be at that meeting, but we have Anthony Abdelhad. We have the superintendent, who, from the vocational school within his district, will be there. So we'll have representation there to talk to the Senate President, and hopefully, with, under her leadership, she can either stall that amendment, push it off, or at least have the information and the knowledge that we need her to have to sort of guide this off the table and push it more to open debate through the legislative process.
And there's nothing attached to the House budget?
Just to keep the board updated on the horticulture building, most of this, I think we've already talked about. We have the OPM contract finalized at Schoolhouse. Craig Wilber is our OPM. The design services, as we talked about, have been sent out. The bids are due back Friday, the 26th of May. So we should have a design service firm onboard sometime in mid-June. The building committee, we are planning on having the kickoff event on the same day as the June board meeting, which we'll talk about. I want to advocate to change the date of the June board meeting, but we'll kick off that building committee following that same day. According to Craig, we probably don't need to have the building committee meet throughout the summer, because once the design service firm is onboard, they need to have time to actually do the job, which is designing the building. So most likely, there might be some downtime over the summer to allow that to happen, and really then begin to meet as a building committee in the fall, probably August and September. As Mr. Aquarjo said, really, one big thing that we have to do is talk about next steps around the budget. How do we close that potential funding gap? It's upwards of a million to 1.4, 1.5 million. One option is that we just continue to scale back that building, just make it smaller, okay? You know, patrol facility, probably a similar discussion, having to happen.
Yep.
And how would that look? Okay? And I'm not necessarily advocating for presenting, I just want to be fully transparent to the board. And what are the ways of closing a gap? The one way is you just build a smaller building. The second option is fundraising, and we talked about capital campaign. I have drafted a letter. It's a very generic letter that could be personalized to various businesses, banks, so on and so forth. I think that should be the next step, when we begin to identify some of those businesses. I can send those letters out, and they're ready to go. Third option that we talked about is a bond, which might be some level of expectation indeed. What would that look like? How do we work with the city? What would those expectations be? How do we pay it? Who pays it, so on and so forth? But that might be the need for a bond. And then other, okay, something that would address that. At this point, again, based on the feasibility study, based on what we have, current revenue in hand, we're about 1.4 million for short. Craig, his schedule, it's a video Excel spreadsheet live by live. Right now, we are on pace to have the completed building in March of 2025, which means we have two school years that we have to house a horticulture program somewhere with the hopes of opening up in September of '25. So that's another issue on the advent team's hands, to figure out where they're going to live.
Can you describe what the process is for choosing the one?
One, somebody that meets all of the discussed in the RFQ, so they have to meet everything. They know that it can be out. Financial, so what is their process in it? So ideally, we want somebody who can do our job, do the job on time based on the schedule we prepared, and be cheeky about it. Those are the three big components.
And for the firms that meet those criteria, who would choose it and how?
Yep. So there's a subcommittee. What we've done, that was part of that meeting that we had with Craig a couple weeks ago, we're talking about that process. So there'd be a subcommittee that we've always had, which would be the facilities director, Craig now as our OPM, Crystal, and myself as a subcommittee. And that would be interviews. So as an example, Schoolhouse was interviewed. They weren't the only OPM bid. So we interviewed those that met all the criteria, and we then selected Schoolhouse, and then we presented to the board. So the precedent would be that that subcommittee would meet, interview those who we think are viable, and then make the recommendation. So let's talk about agriculture mechanics. I've had individual conversations with several of you. I just want to give the board an open and honest and transparent take on some struggles that we've had, the current state of affairs, and a potential recommendation we're looking for. I think as a board, if I look for a recommendation from my team, so I am prepared to at least give you an initial recommendation. So current state, how many students are we servicing? I think that's a valid question. We have 11 seniors this year. We have 11 juniors. We are full in the sophomore and freshman grades, at 12 and 12. So overall, a relatively full program. Few are the concerns that we have, okay? And I can expand on this, and I open up to the board more of a discussion. Any questions you have, by all means, jump in. Staffing concerns, probably the biggest issue we have in that particular program are staffing concerns. And I say all of this with no ill will towards who we have in that particular program at this point. I'm talking systemically, when you look at AgMech as a whole, as a program statewide. There are very few licensed agricultural mechanics teachers to begin with, okay? And that's my point. One point is there just aren't any licensed instructors out there. The second point is, unlike most of the other vocational programs, there's a lack of a clear pipeline for future instructors. If you look at all of the other programs, look at the program that we just heard this evening from Criminal Justice. Criminal Justice is typically former police officers, or lawyers, or corrections officers. There was a clear pipeline of either formal training, informal training, on-the-job training, education, or all the above, that led those instructors along a career path that led them to teaching in a Chapter 74 program. I'll pick on cosmetology since here as well. Cosmetology, a very clear prescribed path of formal training that would lead a cosmetologist to the point of, hey, I want to get back into teaching, okay? Plumbing, electrical, carpentry, so on and so forth. There's typically clear pathways. In agricultural mechanics, there is no clear pathway. Most of the individuals that we have that apply for the job, it's difficult to even get those individuals to be licensed, because part of the licensure requirement is relevant experience. They have to have relevant experience in the industry in order to be licensed. Many of our candidates, they own their own farm. So it's difficult to quantify and certify that that candidate has valid, relevant experience when they work for themselves. How does the state approve? And there's no formal training typically in this background. So we're already up against it when it comes to looking for qualified, interested candidates to teach agricultural programs. That's the biggest issue. Which then leads to the next bullet, student safety. We've had student safety issues this year, okay? I can't hide it. But back to staffing. The turnover in staffing that we've experienced recently, it has created the need for our administrative team to reestablish clear expectations. And to advocate for my team, they have spent hours upon hours upon hours in that particular shop this year. I won't say micromanaged. I want to thank Mr. Bianca for having a vision of how do we get as much support in there as possible? He's actually even identified other teacher leaders in other programs to walk through that shop and give some observations and give some positive feedback, which has been great. Since last summer, we've had five instructors go through that program. It's a two-instructor shop. We had an instructor resign last minute last summer. We had an instructor resign first couple of weeks of school. Then we had fill-ins and fill-ins and fill-ins. We finally hired a second one. Then one that was in there has been hired to move into animal science. We talked about that as a board. We had another instructor come on, and he resigned after one week. So it's been this rotating door in that particular shop, which goes, you know, creates sort of this environment where, you know, what is the structure? What are the expectations in that platform? So this program, we need to get realigned and focus on the focus areas of those industries. Again, it's a particular shop that is very broad as far as what we're preparing our students for and where those graduates go. There's not a very clear pipeline like many of the other shops. And yes, we are beginning to field a lot that's subjective, but we are beginning to field questions and concerns from families about what is the viability of that particular program? What is my child learning in this particular program? We're beginning to get some of those questions, which is raising our need to have this discussion. Shared space. So you've heard from Lorena, you know, over the last few years, we know we have a beyond successful Adult Dad program. We have a very successful- We have a very successful welding program. That welding program shares the space. The AgMech shop and the welding shop are the same space. And we've had some struggles over the past year or so around that shared space and the equipment and the materials being used, whether it's during the day or in the evening, who owns what? And some mishandling of that equipment, and mishandling of the resources has caused issues in both directions. So we have to keep an eye on that. And the last thing we want is to cause any harm to the Adult Ed program and hurt that particular program, specifically the welding program, but just in general. We want to make sure that everybody has a very positive experience with their learning here at Smith. The leadership resources. I've already mentioned this. The administrative team, the amount of oversight and that management is taking away what they have to do campus-wide. There's 14 other vocational programs, there's all the academic programs, all the other needs and responsibilities that our administrative team, they're charged with and responsible for, is taking their time away from those other needs. I can't say it any other way. Our student support personnel, specifically Director of Security, specifically our Behavior Specialist, okay? They are called into that shop many, many times to provide support about student management, okay? Which again, takes their eyes and ears and support from other areas on campus. So those are some, just broad view, current state of affairs. What do we do? I want to thank the Advent Team. We've come together several times over the past month or so. I think we've had some very quality, direct conversations, debate, open discussion, weighing pros and cons, talking about different options. There's three broad options that we sort of identified. I just want to give the board what those options may be, and then sort of go into the next few slides, review around recommendations, how do we move forward? I don't want to sort of create this major issue and leave it on your lap and say, fix it, okay? We have an idea, okay? So option one is to begin to scale back and then rebuild the program. The idea is, we don't want to close a particular program. The idea is, what can we do to save it and rebuild it stronger, so it's viable and successful moving forward? Very briefly, what would that look like? Recommendation next year would be no Grade 9 exploratory. Don't take in any freshmen next year. That means we'd have Grade 10 and 12 shop week. We would have a Grade 11 shop week. There'd be no freshmen to coincide with that junior shop week. And that would allow opportunities to provide PD, training, curriculum writing, site visits. When I say site visits, I'm talking other schools. Shop observations. So we've had teacher leaders from other shops come into AgMech. Maybe we need to get those AgMech instructors into some of the other shops that we have on campus, so on and so forth, to again, rebuild that shop, set some clearer expectations, and create that vision moving forward. So that's sort of option one. Let's pull back a little bit, okay? Sort of refocus, rebuild, and then move forward. Option number two, this is a potential real option, I'm not saying this is the preferred option, but what happens if the instructor is singular? We are down to one instructor at this point. We are working on adding a second. What happens if they say, I can't commit, I'm done? And we have no teachers? That's what option two is talking about. If we have no teachers, then that means we have no program. And if we have to close immediately because of lack of teachers, what would that look like? That's option two. Our seniors, next year's seniors, we try to push out into co-op. Minimize that number as much as possible. And a lot of our students are successful when they are in co-op. So can we try to increase the co-op placements for our seniors next year? Our juniors next year, we know the regulation, they cannot go out into co-op until the second half of the year. They try to push those juniors out into co-op in springtime. And then what do we do in the fall, okay? We might look at the opportunity for some of those juniors to choose another program that they could move into that there's openings here on campus, whether they're unfilled vocational programs, or maybe some of the other ag programs. So how could we begin to display some of the juniors and/or get them out into co-op? Our sophomores, next year's sophomores, they get with no instructors. The idea would be that we push them into some of the other ag programs, or into some of the other vocational programs that have openings. So basically eliminate the sophomore cohort, and then deal with our seniors and juniors the best we can. That's an immediate closure, because we have no staff. Option three would be, if we as an Advent Team, as a board, we felt the best option was to close the program, option three would be a phase-out process, okay? And the recommendation there would be sort of a through-year phase-out. Again, we would not bring in freshmen, obviously, if we made that decision to close. So we would have three grades of service. Our seniors, once again, almost very similar to option two. Our seniors, we try to push out into co-op to minimize the numbers on campus. Our juniors, we try to push out into co-op second semester. We would also look at opportunities around unfilled vocational programs, the other ags. Could we minimize the juniors in AgMech and push them elsewhere? Our sophomores, we begin to offer to push them into some of the other ag programs, into some unfilled vocational programs, or they could continue in AgMech for the duration of their high school experience, which would be why it's a three-year phase-out program. So those are sort of the three options that the leadership team brainstormed and weighed, and there were a lot of pros and cons. This is a Cliff Notes version of several pages. I just wanted the board to understand that we've taken our time, we've tried to review and forecast different options. What's the recommendation? We don't want to shut the program, though. I'll say it again, we do not want to shut the program. Will our hands be tied at some point? Perhaps, okay? But right now, on May whatever, I, as the superintendent, do not want to recommend shutting the program down. What would this look like? That's option one, scaling back and then rebuilding. We recognize, we being the Advent Team, we do recognize that AgMech is part of the cornerstone of the school, is one of our ag programs. And I stand here in front of the board for how many years, telling you that the ag program is the vision. We have to continue to expand in our ag offerings. And for me to stand up here very quickly and say, well, we need to close one of them, I'd be talking on the both sides of my mouth. So right now, we do value the need for AgMech. I do want to just be very clear, though. I think there's a sentiment out there that AgMech has been around for 100-plus years here on campus. It has not been. AgMech is still a relatively new program on campus. Before my tenure, so before 2014, AgMech was sort of a concentration that was embedded within the larger Animal Science program. So technically, we had Animal Science. Our students within Animal Science would filter through, we had a teacher in AgMech who filtered through and learned some of those components of AgMech, but it was not a standalone Chapter 74 program here at Smith. So it's been about 10 years as a formal, official Chapter 74 program. I just want the board to be aware of that fact. But again, as an Advent Team, we do understand the importance of being in ag school. I want to be in ag school. I want to expand the ag programs. I want to make sure, if we can, the Advent Team is willing to put the work and effort in to try to save this program. But we have to do it correctly in the right way. That means taking this coming year and scaling back. It means really focusing and reflecting on the program. And it means ensuring that the school is making the best long-term decision for the students, for the families, the school, and the community, okay? And the bottom line, what would we do for the students? That's top priority, and then obviously, to lesser degrees, all the elements. We need to keep student safety the top priority. We cannot have any students getting hurt. We can't have any staff getting hurt. And whether they're physically getting harmed or not, that's obviously the main concern. But the perception of student safety is also very important. And as a parent, and all of you as parents, and the community being parents, we don't want to have the idea or the perception that if I set my child at Smith, that my child may get hurt. We don't even want that as an option. So we have to really focus on student safety. We have to make sure that we're providing that relevant and focused education for all those students. We cannot risk having families call us up to say, what is my child learning in AgMech? My child is not learning anything in AgMech. We can't have that happen. But we have to have the students going home and telling their families, I am learning this, I am learning that. There should be no question what the teaching and learning is occurring in the child. So here's a recommendation for this coming school year, that we don't offer any exploratory for AgMech next year. So we do scale back, okay? We don't allow any freshmen in. That means we have the sophomores and seniors together in one week. Ideally, as I already mentioned, we are working on hiring a second instructor. So ideally, we will have two adults in there, so they can work together to serve the sophomores and seniors. The following week will be the junior week. And as I mentioned before, only having one grade in there, one teacher, depending on like a rotating schedule or whatnot, can focus on the juniors, they can alternate, while the other teacher is working on some of that staff development I already outlined. The current freshmen and their families, that's next year's sophomores, will be consulted, like now, okay, once we're done with this meeting, to talk to them, to share with them our sort of our future ideas of the program. Some of those families have already been very vocal that they don't want their child in that particular program. So we can work with those families and say, here are some of the other options. If you want to opt out of AgMech, we may have some openings in some other programs. It's not a guarantee. We have to have a process set up to be very clear and very fair on what that would look like. But we could potentially have some families choose to have their children move into other programs.
So there are ninth graders, and families don't want them to stay in AgMech?
Correct. And student safety concerns are across the board. It's happening freshman all the way through. So this is not a special case, I want to take that word. Staffing. I think I was very clear with some of the Advent recently in some meetings, that it's going to take a lot of work on the Advent Team, but that's our job. And we have to ensure that the staffing that is in front of the students have the best chance for success. And that means we have to work with the staff. So the current instructor that we have, again, thank Mr. Biaka for this. Had a direct, honest conversation with the current instructor, and that current instructor is completely committed to the school, and is committed to this program, as of right now, okay? We are able to get an emergency license for that particular instructor. So we would have technically a licensed instructor in front of the students. But we know that the emergency license isn't good for ever, okay? You have to work towards your preliminary license. But we do have one instructor, that one instructor is committed to this program. We are actively working on that second instructor. That second instructor would have the opportunity to earn his or her emergency license as well. So we would have two licensed instructors, emergency licensed instructors in front of the staff, in front of the students. Here's some of the oversight that, as an Advent Team, we have to really push hard on. Make sure that that relevant experience is approved by the Department of Ed. And that's not an easy discussion. I think Joe has on-speed dial, one particular individual at the Department of Ed, in the License Juror Office, is working with that individual to make sure that the relevant experience will be approved. So that's our work to work with the instructor. Again, the leadership team is great just thinking outside the box. We have a mentoring program, as mandated, okay, statewide, but perhaps in this particular case, some of the mentoring-focused areas have to be truly focused for those two particular teachers, and not more of a generic school-wide initiative. We have to target those two instructors. What can we do within a mentoring program to provide more structure and more support, and hopefully lead to greater success? Necessary PD, whether that's within the required licensure courses, which is the next bullet, or is there other identified PD that we want these instructors to go through to make sure that they have at least the skill set to be prepared to teach our students? And then lastly, this has been my big thing. I cannot stand in front of you as a board to say that we're doing all of this, yet the two instructors are not working towards a license. One of them mandates to earn your preliminary license. As a vocational instructor, there's X number of courses, academic courses, that they have to take and pass. I need to make sure that they're at least beginning that process. I know it's a lot. You know, walking into a shop, they've never taught before, we're trying to rebuild that particular program, and oh, by the way, you've got to take these academic courses. That is a requirement. I can't allow that to slide. And those courses aren't focused enough, that will help with some of the issues that we have, that's around classroom management, and lesson plan writing, and assessment, and students with special needs, and so on and so forth. So they are relevant. And then lastly, have a subcommittee, perhaps comprised of some of you as a board, Advent Team, whoever, to really dive into this. I don't want to make a rash decision this evening. I don't want to even make a rash decision, if possible, even by next month. I think this would buy us time and the greatest success to really invest in that program, invest in the instructors, and give us this year to sort of reevaluate, to make sure we're moving in the right direction. Would we have to take another approach again next year? So I would encourage a subcommittee to be created, look at it, and then make another proposal if necessary next spring. But right now, there's concerns, okay? And they're valid, serious concerns. I think there's a way with the strong leadership team that we have, with the commitment that we have of at least the one instructor, and we're hopeful of a second, that we could potentially, if we can pull back, scale back, we can refocus, rebuild, we'd be okay. Any thoughts, questions, comments there?
First of all, I really like the creativity of option one, so well done. One option you didn't mention, and I'm sure there's a good reason for it, is folding it back into Animal Science. Is that a possibility, or no?
So in the eyes of the state, they have two SIP codes, so two different, like serial numbers. In the eyes of the Department of Ed, Animal Science is its own standalone program. Agriculture Mechanics is its own standalone program.
So is that why it was pulled out?
Correct.
Okay.
So once the Advent Team at that time realized, we really can't do that, they were settled. It would be the same argument of, more of a drastic argument would be saying, well, plumbing and electrical is sort of their construction cluster, so let's put them together. You really can't do that.
I applaud you and your team, Mr. Biaka, for your thoughtful revisiting this. I know a couple of weeks ago, you had a different mindset, and you already, well, seemed to be leaning towards another way. And so this is refreshing, and like I said, I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
I will, I appreciate that. I have to give honestly, the full credit to the Advent Team. As the superintendent, where I was a few weeks ago, I was there in support of my administrative team. I could not put my administrative team through the experience that they've been through this year, do it again. That would not be fair to the Advent Team. But as an Advent Team coming together, realizing that as a school, the right thing to do is try to save this particular program, and what will it take, and having the buy-in of all of us to say, this is what has to happen. So I applaud the Advent Team for saying, well, let's try our best this year. Not that they weren't trying their hardest this year, but, so I want to applaud the Advent Team for coming together.
Having automotive experience and working with many businesses that are hands-on businesses that have been given, I would be happy to serve in a subcommittee. And knowing the amount of people like we heard Criminal Justice making these alignments with other industry leaders for their program, I'd like to do the same thing with this program, to reach out to the industry, automotive-wise if they may, mechanical-wise, vendor-wise, industry-wise, to make those connections, to make it easier for the staff and instructors to be able to have coping skills and help to be able to save this program. I agree with you, being integrated with you, that I think it's important to send that message, not only to the alumni of the school, but to the people that are working every day that we care, you know? We want to be involved, and we want to help them, just like you're doing. You can't put a band-aid on it. You've got to fix it, or take the alternative. Thanks.
Thank you.
If the current instructor was not committed to the program, what would your recommendation be to us tonight?
I would probably lean towards a phase-out. We've tried so hard to find instructors. How long can we go struggling to find instructors while we have a current... crisis might be a strong word, I'm not sure of a lesser, basier crisis, but we have a concern that we have to figure out. And without instructors in front of the students, how do we have a program? So no pressure to the instructor if he's watching on TV, but it would be a different topic, I think.
So I have two thoughts for you to consider. One is maybe a Plan B, if the instructor does decide not to return between now and the beginning of the school year, that you have a plan, a default plan in place to turn to, so, you know, you're not scrambling. And the other, it's just a worry in my mind about the... And the other, it's just a worry in my mind about the cost to other students of all of these resources being focused on one program, and that's to the detriment of all the other programs that need the attention. So something just that I would want the subcommittee to be pretty closely monitoring that.
And while we were struggling with staffing, and I just keep going back to Mr. Bianca and the admin team, finding ways to get other adults in there. When we were down to one instructor, we were, and I think it was Wanzick, we were pulling other staff from campus to get in there, just eyes and ears in the program, bodies in the program, which were, again, we weren't then servicing other needs on campus. And that's where I don't think we can afford another year different than that. So I think, again, I don't want to steal the thunder of Mr. Bianca, that the second instructor that we're looking at, I think, is a viable option. If that pans out, I think we're going to be in a better position, but then we as an admin team have to be ready for that support. It's pushing the training, it's pushing the PD and the curriculum writing. And again, you, back to one of my first bullets, there was no clear pipeline, these individuals. For them to hear that the term curriculum, for somebody who's never taught before, is a foreign language, writing a lesson plan, they don't even know what a lesson plan is. You know, they have wonderful ideas, they are great at building rapport with the students, they can think outside the box and think of a project that would engage the students, but how does that particular project tie back to the frameworks that we have to teach? And that's a struggle. So that's where we have to work on.
Another idea too, I'm sure you've already thought of that, is to get the instructors out to most of the coastal AgMec programs in the other, pardon the state. Yes, so they can see what it looks like and talk to those people about how to build their programs.
Correct. And even though it's not AgMec, into some of our programs here on campus that are, you know, working and servicing the same students. So how is some of the other programs very successful? Endless model ourselves.
And seeing what it looks like.
Exactly. Yeah. So thank you. Any other comments, questions? We're committed. Just keep our fingers crossed. I thank the board for your time. No donations this month, unfortunately. So in the news, I'm not going to read these two articles. You may have seen these, both from the committees. The one on the left is giving me that we have, I think, in plumbing, doesn't matter, I'll look for it. He's a sophomore this year, and he's going to the World Junior Archery Championships in Ireland, I believe it is. So kudos. Again, talking about who we have as students on campus, somebody that has that attention and that dedication is quite noteworthy. The one on the right, this is another dream come true. I know it was the last month or the month before, celebrating a donation to cosmetology, a very strong success story. This article was about another success story, coming out of the same particular program. So this young lady, Savannah Cologne, speaking of skills, I think it was my first year here, I took a trip with Ms. Womet down to Louisville at the time. That was where National Skills USA was that particular year. And this particular young lady was the state champion in skills for cosmetology, she went to nationals. She has now just opened up her own business. And it's a wonderful story. If you knew who Savannah is and was as a student, and see where she is now, it means a lot. Back to my point about NHS, understanding our students, where they came from, and the success that they have at Smith, that's another success story, so another good article. Looking ahead, tomorrow morning, we have our final federal advisory meeting of the year. I did have an MIA Tournament of Management Committee virtuals, I'll be in my office later this month. Also on Thursday, again, I don't want to steal the thunder of Mr. Bianca, but we are in the midst of assistant principal interviews. We're getting to almost the final stage. There's been one finalist who's been identified, they'll be coming in, meeting with the admin team on Thursday. Next week, I'll have a coaching session with Cindy, Weeks Bradley. On Tuesday, more work with Cindy with the leadership team or equity work. Right now, it looks like potentially next week, we have, the BABA offices will be meeting with Commissioner Wiley. That same evening, I think this is next Wednesday, is the Appletate Banquet for those who want to attend. On Friday is the senior picnic, which will be out on the football field. The following Monday, as I already mentioned, is Memorial Day, will be no school. And then we get to senior week, which I've mentioned, senior banquet on Tuesday, senior awards on Wednesday, graduation on Thursday, the first. That following week, another coaching session with Cindy Weeks Bradley with me, some of the equity work with Cindy on that Tuesday. And then, what I'm recommending, I just put it out there, as a board you can discuss when you get to this point in the agenda, I recommend that the June board meeting is moved up a week to June 13th. It's the second, I think it's the second Tuesday, but June 13th. We are, as a school, as we already know, the June 20th is the final week of school, is actually the night before the final day. It's kind of crazy, but also from the building committee perspective, it would make a lot of sense if we can get the building committee on the 13th and get that ball rolling as well. So I just recommend that we have both of those meetings on Tuesday, the 13th. I'll turn that over to the board to discuss. June focus, I'll have the opportunity to talk about the senior activities and interview your mirror. And as Dr. Spencer Robertson mentioned, I'll share my self-eval, encircled self-reflection, and I do have some recommendations about our goal. Do you have any questions? Back over to the chair.
Question. A general advisory meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
I knew there was some conflict of all three of us attending. I would like to attend these meetings, but I haven't since Mr. Kalin and Dr. Julie have been attending, so I thought there was a way of posting that would clear that up. Is that?
Yes, but it's past the 48 hours.
I thought you were posting it, so, okay. Are you both attending?
If you want to go, you can cover it for me.
I just throw it out there.
Do it up. Do it up.
Okay.
So can we post in the future?
Can we post it such that all of us could attend if we can?
We can.
Thank you.
Somebody quite wanting you, Joe, just a quick statement. In being 13 years on the board, I've always gone to graduation. And so it's been a big deal for me to watch some of the students that Andy talked about earlier, about their parents and about their grandparents and everybody that comes to Never in their wildest dream, when these kids are growing up, did they ever expect that they could walk across a stage and pick up a diploma. I do get emotional to watch that. When I watch the proud parents, the proud grandparents, the tears in their eyes that night, but the jubilation of the graduation and the screaming and yelling and after it's done and the parties, that's all part of it too. But the, I will be on the count of going to my granddaughter's graduation down in South Carolina. So Julie is going to step in to read to be up on stage and give the words to the trustees. But it's a proud moment for what I'm feeling. To watch my first granddad on my cross. So the feeling that they have for our students, for what I'm feeling, it's real. I just wanted to share that.
Congratulations.
Okay, Joe, you're on.
All right. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Well, Mandy couldn't be with us tonight, but we'll get her report to Ms. Carver, so it'll get shared out after your review. We're still sitting at 560 students. Just some information about the first round of admissions. Those first round acceptance letters went out mid-April, just before April break. 150 letters went out offering seats. The remaining students were offered, well, were identified as being accepted but on the waitlist. So after that first initial round of offers for seats, we'll do a second round. Of that 150, 103 have already confirmed and registered. So that's 68.6 of the initial round. 15 of those students are from North Hampton, which is 14.5% of overall the enrollment. They have till this Friday to accept their seat. After that, next week, we'll have around two letters pulling down on the waitlist and identifying that group of students and offering them a seat, depending on how many are left.
How many are on the waitlist?
I would have to look for the exact number. It's around 125.
Are on the waitlist?
Yeah. We had about 275 completed applications that were scorable, and I think there's another 25 that either pulled their applications or were waiting on some documents. You have to also remember that the numbers I give you of overall applications after March 15th, we can't score them. So those applications sit in wait until we work through the waitlist. So we go by off that March 15th deadline. So the updates that I gave you in March and April, those are sitting and waiting. School council met today. We had the last meeting of the year for us, and the student handbook changes were approved, and Mr. Sabonis will be here to answer questions on those when he gets to that agenda item, if there are any. Playing off of what Dr. Lincoln Hoker talked about, the Skills USA nationals coming up, we do have one student that will be attending. We have the gold medalist in advanced marine factoring, Henry Karen, and he'll be headed down to Atlanta with Mr. Najelski and Mr. Lemore in June. That's June 19th through 24th. MCAS testing for math began today. Mr. Parks oversees that as the curriculum director, academic director. That'll be also tomorrow, and then we'll be doing science June 6th and 7th. On a personnel front, we did have a resignation in PE, so we posted for that position. We also had the health technology instructor retired as of the end of the year, when the interview phase for that one. Dr. Lincoln Hoker began to talk about that, assistant principal. We are in the interview phase. We do have two candidates that came out of committee. The first one will be here tomorrow. They'll be here to meet with the admin team, tour the campus with me, meet some staff, and then we'll have, we'll host them in the restaurant for kind of an informal, be able to sit down and get to know the candidate a little bit better. We'll be offering opportunity for the second candidate to come through next week. Math teacher, which we have posted, we have a staff member who did resign, but did take a position here as a paraprofessional for next year. And then, as you know, the agricultural mechanics, we're in an interview phase, interviewing a candidate that we do hope to have on board. Graduation preparations, I did want to congratulate openly and announce that our own Mandy Wright is the valedictorian of the class, and the salutator is Seth Ostrowski. They have been officially notified. As you know, the senior salutes are being sent out via email to the school community, also going up on social media. The venue, which is our athletic field, is being organized. We've had prep meetings with carpentry, cabinet making, horticulture, and other shops that support the setup. And I want to thank our own Rebecca Wanzick. Wanzick Nurseries has agreed to donate these plants and flowers again for the stage and photography area. Senior banquet, senior awards tonight are in the final stages of preparation, and we'll be ready to go with those. Any other questions? That's my report.
Was the hiring committee for the associate principal happy with the applicant pool?
Yes, they were happy with the applicant pool. We had 14 applicants. You know, we, actually, when we saw Secretary Tuttweiler, it was funny because there was a mention of how one person had left when they applied for their superintendent's position, there was 38 applicants, and when they left, there was eight, something like that. So I think the candidate pool is definitely, and that was, he was in that position for two years, so you're talking about a two-year span. I do think the applicant pool for administration is not as robust as it once was. I think it's a very difficult position. People are looking at it, and I'm not sure that they are ready to enter into it, and if they are, then I think they have reservations. But I think, I am hopeful that that pipeline will improve and things will change. So I am happy with 14 applicants. I think that was a good number for us to pull off of. We interviewed six, the committee, so I want to thank them for the work that they did. And I'm looking forward to meeting the finalists and having to tour the campus. And, you know, Andy always says it's an interview both ways, so that's why we want to create that experience and opportunity to see the campus and get to know people and meet people and when you come out of committee and see how it goes.
Does it seem like the salary range is about right? That we've been able to offer?
I think the salary range seems to be on par with the data that I'm seeing come out. Like, our state association just did a survey, and I think MAVA is leading one too from the principals group, a second survey. And I think we're in the range. Yeah.
And one last question. I know we all enjoy having student representatives on the school committee, and I'm wondering what the process is for selecting the representatives for next year and what the timeline is.
Yeah. So ideally, it would have been Jayana, who is our junior rep, but she is honestly so involved that she's, you know, with athletics and other things that she's
We're low on her list.
Not able to, yes. She's not able to fulfill that requirement. So I will be putting that out in June, around June 1st, out to current students. And it would just be an application. In the past, it's been an application process where they apply in with the reasons why they would like to be a part of that, and if necessary, we'll do interviews and then select from there.
And if there are ways that we can make the position more appealing to them, you know, please let us know.
All right. I'll ask those questions. Okay, thanks.
You're on. Just a few updates. The C building AC project is moving ahead. They're going to start dropping off material during the next couple of weeks. Contract that said he'll be done with his portion by August 4th, so when the teachers come back, it should be our condition in there. The Apple Storage renovation, the storage over by the pasture, they poured concrete yesterday, so hopefully, once that dries and sets up, they can start doing the upgrades to the structural part, and we can zip that back together and get it done. We met today with the architect, HVAC employment engineer, electrical engineer, and structural engineer on the companion and above building, just to, everyone get their ideas all at once, and everybody left, we will have a set of plans, hopefully, within a couple of weeks. Our new passenger, 11-passenger van showed up last week. We're just waiting for Mike to get lettering and have the kids put it on the van, insure it, get plates and register it, so hopefully get it out before the end of the school year. That's about it.
Any more feedback on the renovation project? Everything came together smoothly and?
Yeah. Washer dryer came today. Dryer was one bigger than the door, so.
So you took the wall down?
Took the trim off, I took the door off, unbolted the frame, and it slid right in just like it was supposed to.
How about the door system, the fob systems?
We had a walk-around, I think, May 2nd with the company, and we looked at every single door, what was going to be needed. There were some things we were going to prep beforehand. I got most of that done, so we're still going to move forward with it. They've got to be here for two months solid, and so when they come.
Okay, you're comfortable with your crew for the summer on the animal science building?
Yep.
And you hope to have that closed in for September when the units come back and the shops will be able to get in there and start doing their thing, electrical plumbing, is that the plan?
Yep. Have all the conduit in there, have transformer in there, panels in there, and then the kids can take it from there and finish it. But to have it enclosed, a standing building, yeah.
And how about the sidewalk project?
Goes out to bid tomorrow, get advertised tomorrow, starts for two weeks. I'm a little concerned it's late, already in the construction season, to have someone come in here for the summer to do it, but we made A building the first project, the initial one, and then C building, and then B, so.
Thank you.
I guess I'll start. One of my staff is retiring after 27 years for the city, 22 years in the auditor's office and other offices, and five years with us. June 2nd will be Heidi's last day. We, my staff, we interviewed, we had eight applicants for Heidi's position, we interviewed four, and then we were down to two, and we had a really good meeting, actually, Ms. Carver just kind of brainstorming, thinking about who would be the best beneficial fit. And her name is Virginia, Virginia Perez. Actually, her husband works in the auditor's office. Actually, her husband working in our auditor's office. So she started yesterday so far. She's working with Heidi, so there's a three-week transition. So hopefully, it's a, so far, she's get right in. We're, I'm waiting for an update on the FY '22 end-of-year audit from the outside auditor scammons. We have not heard that. The, I handed out the third quarter budget account summary. It's still a work in progress. With the software update from Munis to the hub, there's been some more kinks. So the vendor and I are continuing to work on this report and fine-tune it. I will be requesting community doctor Spencer Robinson to go over a few questions to find out where she might think something should get. And of course, Dr. Lincoln Hooker.
Thank you so much for condensing all of this into this. Like, it's so much easier to digest and understand and see where the money's being spent, how it's being spent.
So it's hot off the press from today? Just because, again, with the whole transition, we had some issues even getting the, the system's called, the report writing is called Crystal Reports. So getting, we had to get stuff from the city IT department just for him to be able to run these reports. So it's definitely, yeah, definitely a work in progress. Unfortunately, Crystal Reports is so difficult. I've been watching him do a lot of it, and it's not something that I will be able to maintain. So as we have changes, it will be us having to go out. Unfortunately.
But worth it, I think.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's instead of, it's like one click and the report's written. It's nice instead of doing a lot of the reports by hand, like what was being done previously.
And we can use this if we want more information to go to here.
There's that.
And offer anything to support.
So we are closing towards the end of the fiscal year. We'll be working on closing off invoices, purchase orders, preparing for the final payroll and then the summer payroll, and then, of course, starting the next fiscal year. So it's, for a lot of people, it's, you know, quieting down, but we're actually getting busier. And we are, we are, the next thing is the universal lunch program. So I don't know, the governor and the House of Ruffs have proposed to continue the universal free lunch. Unfortunately, the Senate in ways, ways and means did not propose the funding or the language to make it permanent. So right now, we're still not sure what's going to happen for FY '24. Mask reimbursement. Back in FY '21, DESI provided each district funds to purchase masks. We had already used COVID money to purchase masks, especially when they were such a hot commodity. So unfortunately, we were only able to apply $366 towards this funding. So I will have to return the $4,800 to DESI. Jay Sullivan had told us to hold on to it because I think they were trying to think of different ways that we could use it, but now it's being filled with you and I've given it to return. So in lieu of some of these other grants, I'm still continuing to work on the Skills Capital grants. So as we close the one culinary that ends in June, then the other ones, the multi-year continuum. We do have another busy fiscal year next year.
Question?
Yes.
You mentioned that working on the Skills Capital grant. Is there any more movement or discussion on grant writer? I know you've got a generic letter that's going to start going out to banks and businesses in regards to, say, a capital campaign or donations. Just curious about that process.
Yeah. Right now, it's not our top priority based on how the budget that we built. It just, I think we'll continue the same model for now. When it comes to the capital campaign for some of the fundraising, I think that's what we have to look at internally, the letters and whatnot, but not an official grant writer at this point.
Dr. Lincoln Hooker, if we, the universal school lunch bill isn't approved, could we have the food services director help us understand how that will impact that department?
If I may, there is a proposed community eligibility provision. We're currently, so currently, the threshold is lowering the minimum identified student percentage participation threshold from 40% to 25%. We sit right at 37%. So if they lower that, then we get food lunch first. So that's still, we're still waiting to hear that as well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're on.
I apologize. I need to go to the Dollars for Stalers Awards event. And so I was just asking if anyone else was going, or I'm the only one who's going to be ditching. So I apologize to arrive late and leave early.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
It's fun watching all that money being given away.
Is that the one Rich Cooper's pretty involved in?
Yes.
And there should be some of those.
Yes, there are. All right. Well, I'll look back on the number of apologies. Cheer, extra love to them.
Okay, new business. May I have a motion, the second, to approve to not participate in school choice for '23-'24 school year?
So moved.
Agreed. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve an out-of-state overnight trip to Atlanta, Georgia for the National Skills USA Competition, June 19th through the 24th, 2023?
Moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve the use of two school buses for travel to the New England Ag Teachers Conference in Bristol, Rhode Island, June 25th through the 28th, and to transport attendees on scheduled tours in the Bristol area?
So moved.
Second.
Are we making them take school buses? Are teachers take school buses, or are they just buses up along to the school?
So, correct. So the recommendation, we've done this for several years now. So the idea is that we provide two of our buses down there. So the conference, they have outings. They do different trips. Yeah, but the conference needs to have means of transportation. So they look for schools that bring buses for that reason. So we've been donating to buses over the past year.
How uncomfortable are they for the teachers to ride on? Not that?
They're, pretty common.
So we have a motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a motion, the second, to approve the updates to the '22-'23 student handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion, the second?
Just taking a quick look at it.
Yeah, okay.
Did, was anybody going to speak to it, or are these like?
Just if you have questions. Start with your questions. But these are.
I only got through the first half. Just, so the second half, course change, there'll be no course change. Students under age 18, done by the end of first term, no course change. Students under, so what is the difference?
So that's to align with, okay, that's to align with current practice. So over the last about five years, we've moved with having a two-week per grade level. So juniors and freshmen have two weeks in academic classes, sophomores and seniors have two weeks in academic classes, then they can make adjustments. We moved to that about five, six years ago, but some of the language that existed was outdated, which allowed them to change courses all the way through first trimester. So you can imagine, by then, schedules are locked in, kids are looking to see what they're going to get, and then they try to change to avoid grades. But it's pretty common that you have a two- to four-week enrollment window that you're able to switch classes. So that language is working with guidance and Mr. Sabonis's office around making sure that's aligned to actual current practice, which we went to about five, six years ago.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
And the other ones, Tony can answer.
Yeah, because it just, it looks like pretty straightforward.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve and cover the cost for the senior banquet for vocational teachers, senior advisors, administrators, and trustees?
So moved.
Second.
Approved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's unanimous.
May I have a motion, the second, for discussion and possible action, a vote to approve a $600 superintendent award? And I'll let you speak to that.
I might get motion, second.
So moved.
Second. Yes. Discussion, please.
So for discussion, this is a longstanding award that the superintendent recognizes. A staff person is not necessarily having to be a teacher. It can be any staff person, any employee, unspecificational, who sort of exemplifies what we stand for as a school, what we want in any and all employees. And this has been, historically, it's been a $500 award. I want to thank the board. I believe it was last year, the board voted to increase it to $600. In recent past, there was one year, the height of the pandemic, we actually recognized all staff as a superintendent award because of the dedication and devotion during the pandemic and stepping up and going above and beyond. But typically, this is one individual on staff that recognizing as truly being that beacon of light and hope and role model for all. So I just ask that the board continues to support it with a $600 award. I do have somebody in mind. I'd hate to announce it this evening. But my idea, all of you would be invited to the final day of school, the 21st, the PT opens on a lovely lunch. And my plan would be to recognize that individual at that particular lunch. Another maybe plug for all of you to show up, perhaps. The plan right now is to recognize the two of these IREs that we have also at that last day of school during lunch, when all staff are there. Sometimes it's difficult to get people to retire at dinner elsewhere. So we'll recognize those two individuals as well on the last day of school. That's the plan.
So you make the selection unilaterally? It's a superintendent's award?
Yes, I do lean on the admin team. I ask for nominations, and we advocate for various individuals. But at the end of the day, it would be my decision.
And are we voting on it because it comes from the trustees account?
Yes.
And do we have to vote on it every year?
Because the money coming out of one of your accounts is out of cash. Yes.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes. Say there's some individual that keeps standing out year after year after year. I imagine in your mind, you wouldn't select that same individual.
I do not believe, I can't speak on behalf before my tenure, but there has not been a repeat winner, besides the one year where everybody was recognized. I don't recall any individual. That would not be my practice. We may get to a point in full transparency. This is my personal philosophy with any of these awards. We may come to a year where we don't recognize every good year. I'd rather make sure that this award is prestigious. Not that all staff are not recognizable. That's not what points.
Great point. Thank you.
This is what matters.
Good catch.
But anyways, I just want to make sure that we're not giving to the same person every single year.
Right.
It's noteworthy.
Great.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve an increase to the facility use custodial rate to $55?
So moved.
Second. So moved.
Can you explain?
Absolutely. The current rate is $50. And at the beginning of FY '24, we take two of our longest custodial employees. When they work Sundays or holidays, it's double time. So if they're working an outside event, which would be the facility rate, they wouldn't be making, we wouldn't be paying them the double time. So this, the $55 allows for us to cover that.
The people who are paying for the facility there, they would allow to cover, pay them at the rate they should be paid.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion, the second, to approve the surplus for donation of four boxes of base shields from Health Technology?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Future business, June 20th, 2023, regular board of trustees meeting. We move that right?
I recommend if we can, to the 13th. That's what we have the board.
We okay with that? I'm okay with it.
Okay with it.
Okay. And then we're going to dovetail the building committee at 3:00.
3:00. July 18th, regular board trustees meeting, if we have one in July, I reckon. So we're going to play it by ear. It may be at the beach. August 15th, 2023, tentative, regular board of trustees meeting, 5:00 PM here. The upcoming events have all been talked about. May 30th, senior banquet. May 31st, senior awards. June for graduation. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No. I have a, I have a.
God, please stop.
I just do this. I do. Generate more alumni association, whatever you wish to call it. Get it vibrant, get it active. I know we have a lot of sending districts and, you know, people come to school here and they leave, and they're kind of often doing their own thing halfway across the state or wherever it may be. I think it's important that we try to develop a sustainable or active alumni association. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks for it.